Roll call, please.
Commissioner Smith? Here. Commissioner Kennedy?
Here.
Vice Chairman Glass?
Here.
Chairman Hewort?
Here.
Commissioner Seay?
Here.
Commissioner Putnam?
Here.
And Commissioner Phillips?
Here.
Hey, everybody's here.
First item, consent calendar minutes. Would anybody like to make a motion to approve the minutes? Or modifications?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second?
I'll second.
Move to the second. Any discussion? See none?
I was not here, so I will abstain.
Thank you. Okay. Call for a vote?
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Glass?
Yes.
Chairman Hewort?
Yes.
Commissioner Seay?
Yes.
Commissioner Putnam?
Yes.
And Commissioner Phillips?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Second item, approval of resolutions listed on the minutes as 1 through 5 in abbreviated. Any emotion to approve or pull one out? Or approve the batch 1 through 5?
I'll make a motion to approve 1 through 5.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second. Any discussion?
I'll abstain as well.
Thank you. Call for a vote?
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Glass?
Yes.
Chairman Hewort?
Yes.
Commissioner Seay?
Yes.
Commissioner Putnam?
Yes.
And Commissioner Phillips?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes.
Thank you. Okay, now to general business. Item number 1, staff report, please.
Good evening, members of the Planning Commission. Item number 1 is requesting a transient rental license and coastal development permit to allow the renting or leasing of a room with or without table boards in a unit within a triplex for periods of fewer than 30 consecutive days at 356 Metropole Avenue, Unit A. The owner and applicant is Nathan Linz. Jordan Lake is the representative, and he is in the audience. The property is located within the high residential zone. The property is a triplex. The applying unit contains 1 bedroom and 1 bathroom. The property is developed with a residential use consistent with the general plan, which is allowed under the 2021 growth policy. The other 2 units within the property are and will remain as year-round rentals. The property owner will be acting as the property manager. The contact information is included within the staff report. The transient rental housing, in fact, statement submitted by the applicant declares that the property was owner-occupied full-time. Avalon Municipal Code Section 3/1310E5 provides that the planning commission shall consider whether granting the transient rental license shall result in any year-round resident located adjacent to the proposed transient rental having more than the majority of adjacent residential permitted or licensed for transient rental use. Upon analysis, the saturation map included in your staff report indicates that upon approval of the transient rental license, no oversaturation will occur as occurrence saturation is lower than 50 percent. The proposed project is categorically exempt under Section 15305 of the State Sequel Guidelines, minor alterations and land use limitations, which do not result in change in land or in density. The project requires a coastal development permit under Section 9/6602V2V of the Avalon Municipal Code. The project is not within the 300-foot appealable zone. City staff have not received any comments in favor or in opposition of the transient rental license. Staff recommends to the Planning Commission to find this project categorically exempt under Section 15305 of the State Sequel Guidelines, minor alterations and land use limitation, adopt the findings necessary to support approval of the coastal development permit, including that the project is not within the 300-foot appealable zone, accept the findings necessary to approve the transient rental license, and find the application is allowed under the 2021 growth policy. This concludes my presentation, and I am available for any questions.
Thank you. Before we open the public hearing, are there any questions for staff on this proposal? Okay. Seeing none, we'll open the hearing. Public hearing's open. Anybody wishing to speak for, against, or provide information?
Good evening, members of the Planning Commission staff. My name is Jordan Lake, 311 Catalina Avenue. Nathan asked me to show up on his behalf just to make sure you guys knew what was going on and why he was applying. He has been occupying the unit in question for over the last 2 years. He is relocating because his family is expanding. The other 2 units in the triplex are going to remain year-round housing, so he has no intention of changing that. This particular unit, he wants to have Grandma be able to have a place to stay, but also doesn't want to lose out on generating income to help, you know, offset his expenses. So with it being a transient rental, he can block out time when Grandma's here in it, and when Grandma's not here, he can, you know, if people are going to rent it, if it's approved, then he'll be able to use it for that function as well. So that's basically why he applied. Any questions for me?
The 2 of the units were rented out year-round now?
Yes.
In fact, he's a great landlord. The 2 units in question are occupied by our dive staff.
That was your dive staff.
Yeah, I celebrated.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Thanks, Jordan. Anybody else wishing to speak for, against, or provide information? Seeing none, I'm going to close the hearing. Anybody would like to make a motion?
I'll entertain a motion to approve with staff recommendation.
I'll second.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none. Rossiel, if you could call the vote, please.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Glass?
Yes.
Chairman Hewort?
Yes.
Commissioner Seay?
Yes.
Commissioner Putnam?
Yes.
And Commissioner Phillips?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jordan.
Thanks, Jordan.
Excellent, Jordan.
Okay, item number 2?
Sure.
So it's you?
It might be me. So good evening, Commissioners. Item number 2 is a public hearing to consider an application for a site plan, conditional use permit, and coastal development permit to add a multipurpose room with a deck to an existing structure. The structure in question is at the museum. And construct a bank of steel containers for storage and 4 off-street autoet parking stalls and a vacant lot located adjacent to the current existing structure where the Catalina Island Museum resides at 225 Metropole Avenue. The project is in the coastal zone and subject to a coastal development permit, which requires a public hearing and Planning Commission approval. Planning Commission will determine whether the project is within the 300-foot appealable seaward boundary. The project is categorically exempt under Section 15303E of the State Sequel Guidelines for new construction or conversion of small structures. So in terms of the site plan, the property, as mentioned, is located within the special commercial zone. It currently exists as a developed lot where the museum is located. That lot is 217 Metropole Avenue and as an adjacent vacant lot at 225 Metropole Avenue. Both lots are owned by the museum. On the existing site of the museum, the applicant's proposing to construct approximately a 958-square-foot second-floor multipurpose room with new floor infill with steel beam framing and a 98-square-foot deck. On the adjacent lot, the applicant's proposing to install a row of 4 steel containers and a second row located directly behind the first row of 4 painted double-stacked steel containers for a total of 12 altogether. So you'll have 8 in the back and 4 in the front. This will also have a catwalk access to the stacked containers and a new steel gate. The storage containers will be secured to foundations, and the double-stack containers will be secured to each other as per engineering plans so that there's no movement. The storage containers will be used to store current and future collections and exhibits and requires a conditional use permit. Additionally, the applicant is proposing to install a slope-drive aisle with crushed gravel and a rolled sidewalk curb, along with the development of 4 off-street golf cart parking stalls and then new construction fencing and gates. The project conforms to all Avalon zoning codes and ordinances with the improved entitlements sought by the application. It does not create any additional living or transient units, and thus the requirement under the city's growth policy is codified in the municipal code, which requires the confirmation of water allocation or that a water allocation is not required is not applicable. It is a permissible project under the growth policy. The city does not have a mechanism right now to really regulate steel storage containers, and so after consulting with legal, the best course of action was to apply for the conditional use permit. So this conditional use permit is really there to allow a development of permitted use for the, in the special commercial zone with the CUP. And the site for the CUP is found under the Special Commercial Development Standards for Public and Semi-Public Uses. So these structures are connected to the museum. They're used to store exhibits and collections of the museum, and those are for public consumption when put out. So that was kind of the rationale. On a separate side, we will be coming back to the Planning Commission to propose new changes to our municipal code so that we can better regulate these storage containers because they're becoming very popular methods of construction for a lot of different applications and uses in various zones. So the rest of the staff report kind of talks through the determinations in there, and so really with that, staff is recommending the commission do one of 5 different, actually do 5 different actions. The first one is to find the project categorically exempt under Sequa Section 15303E of the State Sequel Guidelines for new construction or conversion of small structures. Adopt the findings to support a coastal development permit pursuant to AMC Section 9-8.103. Adopt the findings to support the approval of the conditional use permit. Approve the site plan as proposed with the standard listed conditions. This is found in the staff report under Exhibit A. And then find the project outside the 300-foot appealable seaward boundary because it's further back from the oceanfront. So with that, that concludes my report. I'm available for any questions.
Okay, thank you.
I also have the applicant and developer here as well for additional questions that the commission may have.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for staff before we open the public hearing? Okay. Open the hearing? Anybody from the audience wishing to provide information or speak for or against this proposal? Please step forward, give your name and address.
Hello, this is Ron Bevins. Good to see you, Commissioners. Address 123 on the street. I'm here to answer any questions. Also have our consultant Brian Propp, who's been working with us for 2 years on this project. I think it's pretty simple. We have the, I've been the chairman of the board for 4 years. We have a great building. I think we do a good job in the community, but we immediately identified some issues that we have. Our continuing goal is education. We really do not have a good indoor space the way that building was designed, so the multipurpose room would be to exhibit more art, to do more educational things with the students here and with Chapman University, which we have an MOA, a memorandum of understanding with. And then we also have so many things that we would like to exhibit. We need more space to do that. We have things stored all over the island in various different containers, and we would like to improve the look of that parcel next to us. Some of those things in mind, about 2 years ago, we engaged Brian Propp, our consultant, and are trying to find a place to store all of the things we have and a place to exhibit more of them. And so we're both here if there are any questions.
Any questions?
I have some. The containers, they're painted. They're painted what? Just painted?
Yeah. It's a very interesting, it's something that I was very interested in when we first started talking about it, but I've learned a lot. So I'll let Brian address the aesthetics, which are very important to us.
Thank you. Good evening, Commissioners, and we appreciate Michael and the rest of the staff's efforts to help us through the application process. And just to answer your questions specifically, as Michael mentioned, they are being used for a lot of different uses other than transportation, and they would be definitely clean and painted to match in a way that's cohesive with existing museums.
You're trying to paint them to blend in, not to be different colors?
100 percent. So I guess if you look at the museums kind of taupe cream color, that's what we envision.
Okay, I've got more to the point. The 4 parking spaces, are they public or are they for employees?
Yeah, we envision those spaces being private to the museum.
Okay, so the city's losing 50 feet of parking on the street? In that, okay.
So that's a good question. We have just recently engaged our civil engineer, and we're going to do the analysis for the actual curb cut. It's possible that there would be a much smaller curb cut that allows us...
Cut it where the truck or something would go in and come over and around, but I just, you know, but parking's such a big issue here all the time.
Yeah, I mean, I think we can continue to discuss the use of those stalls, to be honest with you. We haven't studied that as much as we have the structures, but what we do envision is that the cut that will allow for the access to the structures would maybe also be used by the autoet so that it's not a curb cut width per vehicle, but maybe one that's shared so that they can access.
And I just wanted to point out, too, that while they might be for private use, that's for golf carts also that's coming off the existing road, because if they're for employees and they're already parking on Metropole, we're removing those vehicles off, so there might be a net zero.
But the main thing is that side of the street, the north side of the streets for full-length vehicles or trucks or anything larger than, so the golf carts, I mean, yeah, I get it, we need more golf cart parking, but the other side of the street's exclusively for golf carts. Anyway, that's a statement, basically. My most important question, what are you doing with the, the lot slopes to the east, but it slopes to the south? And the Casa Marquita next door, it slopes way down, and you can see now that just the way things are, you're below their finished stucco line on the exterior.
Yeah, that's a good observation. If you look at the way the slope works from the Casa Marquita, and if you look at what's exposed in terms of the stepped footing, with our civil engineers, we're going to look at what would be an allowable, say, 2 to 1 slope so that we can still slope away from that. And then also, we're looking for a balanced site so there's no export and import so that we can remove some of the slope to build up for...
Yeah, you can put some back, but what I mean is if you're using that as an access on the west side, and you have to bring it down something, it looks like you may, you know, interfere with their footings and their...
Yeah, that's a good observation. You know what I expect, Commissioner Putnam, is that with our civil engineer, we also have a structural engineer onboard, and we're going to be going through the process of evaluating all of the earthwork.
No, I...
And where necessary, we'll be able to provide retaining.
Yeah, but I mean, I'm aware that we're only doing this conceptually and not for building plans and not engineered, but there's quite a bit of a drop-off. There's got to be some adjustment.
Yeah, one thing that we've noticed is, you know, the street gets pretty steep there, and the adjacent grade, what we're trying to achieve is not the first-floor elevation museum, but actually capture the second one.
But you still have to protect Casa Marquita's building.
That's our intention, for sure.
While you're on those lines, I think your crushed gravel idea will become a nightmare with the slope of that lot, but if you're getting the engineers to look at it, I think you'll have a significant watershed issue that'll become a problem in the street. Because as that lot exists now, when we get a significant rain, that street has, or that lot has significant runoff.
Thank you. I know that one of the things that we're looking at, too, is the permeability of the soil and how we would handle the storm runoff with French drains and catch basins and things, and we would be open to other types of surfaces that would be a benefit to runoff.
I agree with Sandy about the curb cut. I wouldn't take the whole 50, I would never vote for the whole 50 feet to be cut, but you just have a giant curb in front of your building and, you know...
Which would help with the runoff.
I would be much more likely to say, yeah, if you had one come in where the full-size vehicle is, and then the golf carts on the property pull into their spots as opposed to taking more curb, because there is no large full-size vehicle parking in town, downtown. That's probably the only place around. And my other concern is what these containers are going to look like from the houses above. I know they're used all the time for, to make everything from homes to them, but my concern is, does that look good in our city? The steel containers. Or should there be a facade roof on top so the people above don't have to look? I don't know, I'm just talking. If I lived up there, I would definitely have this concern, because I wouldn't want to, you know...
I understand that as well, and I think that's also a good point. And what we envision, though, too, is, at this stage, as you know, it's about planning and entitlement per code, but we also know with the architects onboard, the next step with them would be to also put a landscape consultant. And so when we look at how landscapes incorporated, what is shielded, what's exposed, I think TBD, but I'd say one thing, too, is if you go by the museum, we know that deferred maintenance and the appearance of the museum is obviously important to the organization, and so in the same way it's kept up with its landscaping, we are its neighbor, and so that's the intention. And even from the amphitheater, we do, as Ron said, we see it as going to be a huge improvement from the visibility of what it currently is.
Looking at that empty lot.
I think if they're going to be putting that extra, I'm having brain fog. If they're putting that extra building, little building there that they would make the whole area, because you said you're going to use it as educational and people in there and, you know...
Still storage containers just sitting there. If there was a roof or something, you know, it's a facade, it might work better for the all the people above looking down on it. That's my two cents.
Any other questions? Or the applicant?
Thank you. Happy to answer additional questions, sure.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak for, against, or provide information? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. Anybody would like to make a motion? And if it gets seconded, we can have discussion.
I kind of feel the same way that Bart does about the curb. So if that's something that is possible...
You could make a motion with the condition...
Right. Continue.
Well, I think where we are right now, they still need to go design this and work with staff throughout the design process. So as long as our motion kind of includes the concerns that the Planning Commission has, so we can reiterate that to whoever the design team is, let them, you know, get busy designing it and building it. So something like an addition would be to have a single entrance curb, not a wide-open 50-foot curb cut? And, you know, and address the landscaping, address the, you know, the appearance from above. You know, they're going to work with their engineers to figure out how the lot's going to work with the lot next door. I mean, there's still some work to be done, so as long as those concerns are reiterated within the motion, then...
I agree, other than the fact that if we're approving it now and they just go back...
Well, we can use those as conditions. Those are conditions to an approval.
Could we approve 1, 2, 3, and 5, and then have 4 until there's further consideration of the site plan? It seems like there's a couple of, quite a few things that are still up in the air, so could we approve it without recommendation 4, which is approving the site plan?
That would be a denial, I think. I think if we, at this point, it'd be best to go through at least the minimum conditions. It sounds like we want those, but then add additional conditions based on what we would like to see done in their final, which I think is pretty straightforward. It's limited curb cut, landscaping, and some mitigation measures to assure the view not just from the street, but from above.
And the neighbors.
Resembles the type of area that it's in. Something like that. I mean, those were the 3 topics?
The other one that you had discussed as a collective body had some concerns that drainage was assessed and addressed?
Yeah.
I think that's just kind of an overbringer. They have to do that to protect their asset. If they don't, everything they've just put in is ruined, so I think that will be carried out just by the fact that they're putting on all this money to make sure...
So...
I guess I would look at it as...
And it looks like I'm not getting any panic looks in the audience, so I think they're fine.
The only thing that I would like to see is that if we had a curb cut, it would be for a full-size vehicle to pull through, and anything else you have up there can just pull on your property and pull into those other spots, and that way you can retain some of the public parking upfront. Because basically, when you take that, you've just taken the public parking and turned it into private parking.
Correct.
And you take the whole thing.
Okay, so with those 4, do you think, Michael, you can articulate those on the approval that's written up? So it would be, to articulate a motion that hasn't been made yet, but...
So it would be approve the site plan as proposed and add to the standard list of conditions that the entrance curb is addressed to accommodate a single entrance and mitigate or preserve as much parking as possible, address landscaping, drainage, and mitigation measures for, and I missed that last part of that?
For the aesthetics.
For the, oh, for the aesthetics.
And I'll, just a question for purposes of the conditions, is that something that's within the purview of city staff? City staff, I mean, city staff in the standard conditions reviews and approves, for instance, certain specifications related to the plan? I'm just trying to think of how the motion would work practically in terms of those raised concerns that Michael just mentioned.
Well, I mean, if you're looking for a full-size vehicle to park in a place, it doesn't take more than 10 feet to make a curb.
Right. But actually, can we hand the responsibility to the staff to interpret that administratively? Is that what you mean? Isaac?
Yes, I'm just wondering what the commission's direction is for the motions on the floor for the motions on the floor for essentially confirming those conditions are met to the satisfaction of the city.
I'm not following that.
I think what he's saying is staff has the ability to move forward in making sure the applicant adheres to the amended standards of conditions and applies that to the applicable municipal code regulations. Is that correct, Isaac?
Okay, well, is there a motion for that? It would be the.
My biggest concern is the staff.
Yeah.
And I think everything else, they have to, yeah.
They're going to do it just to make sure.
Well, I think with the property next door, that's something they're going to have to do. You know, and it's just the law. And I think the drainage, it would behoove them to, for their own assets, like you said. So I think basically, a condition for us to approve, well, for me to approve it would be the curb and the size. So I guess we just need to come up with a, if everybody's comfortable with that.
Well, I think all of those conditions added to number 5 are appropriate. So I'll make a motion with those five added items. I think it was five? Four? Four added, five standard. Parking, visual appearance from above, drainage, and curb cut. Okay, as discussed.
So Isaac, were you saying that we just had a.
With the standard list of other requirements that the city has already posted. Okay, and as convoluted as that just sounded, I think we all have an idea of where this is going.
Yeah, and I think what Isaac was trying to communicate was that there's some enforcement mechanism so that this is satisfied to the satisfaction of the planning director would be.
Thank you.
Would be the administrative piece of that.
So it'll be done administratively, we're handing it over to you. Once it's approved, we have no more.
Satisfactory than you guys are.
So we have a motion on the floor, hasn't been seconded.
I'll second it.
Okay, moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Build it. Okay, call for a vote, please.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Glass?
Yes.
Chairman Hewitt?
Yes.
Commissioner Seay?
Yes.
Commissioner Putnam?
Yes.
And Commissioner Phillips?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item? Thanks. Items of discussion?
So the only thing that I wanted to just bring forth to the planning commissioner's attention, we did receive one written communication that was included in everybody's packet. It is not an agendized item. If the person who wrote the comment would like to make this an item, they are more than welcome to contact my office and we'd be more than happy to put that on.
I guess my question on this, because I was privy to all this stuff and I just tried to get insurance on my business as well, and it is insane. And this is a commercial spot, but she's just trying to get fire insurance and everything's like tripled on her because they're saying the city's such a high fire risk. Every one of the insurance businesses pulled out now.
We had that problem with our property.
It's a major problem. If there's some way us as a city can do something to correct that, I think it would behoove us to put it as an agenda and see what if and what we could do to help.
I agree.
I think we have to look for help.
We do.
It's, I just got my insurance. It took me, I was working on it for like six weeks. And, you know, if you know where I live, I live on Main Lane. They insured my house on the south side of the street. They won't insure the one on the other side because it's in a much higher risk. Because they're not sure that they can get a fire truck up the street. Of course, Seaport Village is going to be.
And this is something that we can bring back so that we can actually discuss it at greater length. I just wanted to make sure you have that in mind.
And I think it would, I mean, not just, I mean, not just like, oh, because property owners are going to be, you know, have to pay almost like 400% more. But what happens then, it just trickles down and then the property owners get passed on to year-round renters and then it's already a struggle, so.
No, there's all sorts of horror stories. But we've got to do something to try to correct it.
If we put this on agenda, and it sounds like we will, is there something that cities are doing, you know, to deal with this?
I can look into that, so I'll have a much more prepared answer for you.
No, other cities are looking into it.
Well, and I called the fire chief right before the meeting began. And our current ranking here as a city department is a four.
That's the department, but the individual.
But that ISO rating, the problem is, is that the insurance agencies develop their own ranking system based on brush fire exposure and so on. The state fire marshal got involved back when I was mayor and they wanted to give us a high-risk standard so that we could get airdrops, and it got complicated. And the reality is, is the state fire marshal wants the larger area, he has to protect, the more resources he has to ask for, right? So it becomes a money game. At the end of the day, the one that's winning here is the insurance companies to raise premiums. But look at the state of California, you know, it's burning up. So they're going to try to get their money where they can get it. So it would be nice to create a unified stand and get a meeting here to find out exactly what's.
Okay, we'll talk about that in the future. We don't want to go too far into this.
Yeah, but you know, this is happening now.
No, but we're not going to talk about it tonight.
No, no, no.
This wasn't talking about it, this was just exposing the issue.
Excuse me.
We've exposed the issue.
No, excuse me. Comma, it's happening now, therefore we shouldn't put it off too long. That's what I was kind of fitting.
I would say we should put it on our next agenda, decide what to discuss.
More than happy to.
Does that make sense? And if the city council wants to look at it and talk, you know, any direction we could get would be helpful. And I hear what you're saying, Rob. If you get too far down the road, then we can't get help with the airdrops. We can't get at that as well. But the two go hand in hand. The expenses can be passed on to the people living here or the businesses is going to be huge. Everything goes up four times.
Okay, is, any city attorney report from?
If you can, I don't have any reports. You can hear me all right?
Thank you.
Okay.
Planning commission?
I'm good. Welcome to August.
Today. Yeah.
I just would like to announce this will be my last commission meeting. I'm taking a job that's going to require a lot of travel. I'm not going to be able to fulfill my duties here. It's been a pleasure serving the community this way. I'd like to thank the city of Avalon for the opportunity and I've enjoyed working with all of you.
Likewise, thank you.
We're going to miss you, Mike.
Good luck to you and your job.
I'm excited, but I won't be here to attend the meetings.
Anything else? We'll think about you once or twice. Yeah. Okay, good night, Tony. Need some air.